Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Board of Selectmen. It is Tuesday, May 21st at approximately 7:04 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt. I'm joined by my fellow board members, Chris Weider, C.C. Van Tyn. We're also joined by our town moderator, Blythe Robinson, and our administrative assistant, Nancy Langwa. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcasted to NCTV's government cable channel as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. With that, please join me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Did I nail that first intro or what?
I think I've been...
She's been demoted to town moderator.
I was trying to say it was demoted or promoted.
We'll try again in two weeks.
You've been joined by our town administrator, Blythe Robinson. Welcome, Blythe.
Thank you.
Ah, that'll be highlighted.
That'll be in the blooper reel, Kevin.
There we go. We'll get it started nice and early this year. All right, Blythe will match. What would you please be the agenda for this evening?
Let's let me read for a little bit. So, please consider the Selectmen's liaison assignments. Please consider appointing Gary Sullivan to the Town Government Study Committee. Please consider approving and executing the FIRE Union contract, which we might, may want to table until the end of the meeting after we've had a chance to go into executive session about that. Number five, please consider the following topics and actions for the H. Olive Day School Roof Replacement Project, which is to discuss the next steps on the school roof project, then authorize the Chair to execute the MSBA project funding agreement, and finally to authorize the Chair to award the bid to Greenwood Industries. Please consider authorizing the Chair to execute a contract with Par Corporation for Stormwater Engineering Services. Please consider authorizing the Chair to award a bid for SERSG Water and Sewer Chemicals to various bidders for fiscal year 2020. Please consider authorizing the Chair to sign a FEMA reimbursement grant request for expenses incurred by the town for the March 13th, 2018 snowstorm. Please consider reestablishment of the Economic Development Committee. Please discuss process to fill the position of Fire Chief. Please discuss the Board's goals and work plan for the ensuing fiscal year. Please consider the, please discuss the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. If you would, we have a number of warrants that have been signed. If you wouldn't mind, I'll waive the reading of all those numbers. Number 14, please approve, please consider approval of the minutes. There are actually no minutes ready for the Board's approval. And then two executive sessions. The first, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body with regard to the FIRE Union contract. The second one, the same state citation to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body with regard to the pending litigation matters with the town.
That's it?
Yes.
Lots to get to tonight. First one on our list is we have the Selectmen Liaison Assignments. Now, ahead of this meeting, we passed around a list that outlined what the liaison assignments traditionally were, outlining each of the different boards, committees, and groups that we tend to offer a Selectmen's liaison to. One of the things that we had discussed as a group was the transition of some of the established town departments to fall back within the realm of the town administrator. As, you know, as we've clearly identified before, I think the analogy we used was town administrator manages day government, Board of Selectmen works with night government. And these departments really need somebody that's available to them during the days. So, those will be moving off of the liaison list unless anybody has any objections. Very good. So now, looking at the rest of the list, everybody's had some time to review and see what kind of things stick out to them, what they'd be interested in, so I'll leave it up to the group to highlight any of the options that you'd be inclined to serve with.
I had stated that I would be, obviously, be interested in the zoning board of appeals. That would be a good fit. And I would be, I'd be honored to also handle the council on aging as a start. So, those two to begin with.
Very good.
And I guess I'll be taking all the rest if somebody else wants it.
I was just finishing, I was letting it type him in before I chimed in.
Go right ahead.
All right, I just wanted to...
It should be right after, um, right after my memo, so near the beginning.
So, I know last time I had high hoseyed safety building. I'd still like that.
It's right. Keep going. There it is.
We're gonna get some tab devices.
Yeah, I think we need to.
I love school supplies.
Maybe, maybe it's good if we take the ones off the list that are gonna be done by day government before we decide what's left.
Sure. I think that falls into Department of Public Works.
I would suggest public safety, but there's gonna be a committee for, say, the fire depart, for the fire buil, fire station. That would be one where you might very well want a Selectman on that.
Especially in this circumstance, yeah.
Either on it or a liaison to it.
Was that a different one than the one?
Yes, the, the one that you're talking about is a specific public safety building committee, as opposed to this being specifically police and fire traditionally, right.
I would've left all of the others on the list.
Yep, that makes sense to me, too.
And we had a late request today for possibly appointing someone to the Buckley Man...
Correct.
...project.
That's right. The petitioners who have their pit project going on right now, that Chris, you're very well aware of, requested that a Board of Selectmen member be added as a liaison to that process as well. So, I wanted to bring that up to the group to see what they thought about that. I think it's a good idea. I think Blythe, you thought that was a good idea as well, but I did wanna open it up for discussion and see what everybody else thought.
I think the problem is the ZBA has a different role than those in the PIP process.
Right.
So, I think it's, it would be very difficult for me to sit on that.
Yep.
Only because my opinions would have to be, obviously, ZBA is first.
Yeah, that'd be a lot of, overlap.
So, I think that might be tough, yeah. So, I think I would leave it to one of you, too, if you wanted to be a liaison.
I would absolutely be interested in serving that role, C.C., unless you had any objections.
No, I think that makes sense based on your background.
Additionally, on my list, I did have, even with the planning board, I have some good experience with them, and I don't think they're quite sick of me just yet, so I'd like to stay with them, as well as the Norfolk Schools. I have a pretty good relationship I've built with Thomas Doyle over the course of the last few months, and I'd like to keep that going if that was agreeable to the rest of the board.
Now, do we consider Norfolk Schools similar to Public Works, or do we consider that different?
I, well, since they have a school committee, I would suggest you wanna have a liaison to that committee.
Okay.
Same as a council on aging, yes, there's a director, but I think it's important to maintain that relationship, the communication.
Absolutely.
I'll chime in. I'd be delighted to work with the King Philip Schools and also either the Historical Commission or the Library. I wanna take all the fun ones, but those are, those are fun, so I'm like, whoa, they're still out there?
Well, it seems like we're still running pretty even, so, C.C., if you wanna take both of those...
Sure, that's fine.
I would be happy to take the Board of Health. It runs a little bit with the zoning boards, so I have no problem with that.
Absolutely.
I'd love recreation, too. On some high, real easy, asking for the...
Recreation, got it.
How many does that make? Four?
You have five, yep.
Five. King Philip, Public Safety Building, Recreation, Historical Commission, and Library.
And since C.C. has King Philip and you have Norfolk Schools, I'll take Tri-County Schools.
Oh, that's a good split of education. I like it.
You have five?
I have the Public Safety Building.
Oh, Phil, oh, sorry, thanks, that's unmissing.
That's not on the list. And then, King Philip, Recreation, Historical Commission.
Yeah, I had the other four, I just was like, missed that one.
So, I can catch up. I'll be happy to take the Energy Committee. And I believe that Conservation Commission kinda makes sense with Planning Board. Community Preservation is still out there, and I think that's it. And Chris, I think if my count is correct, you're sitting at four.
Oh, sorry, missed that. Chris took Council.
Is that correct?
Council on Aging.
I am sitting at four.
All right, well, how does Community Preservation sound to you, sir?
Sure.
Beautiful. And with that, the 2019 draft of liaisons is complete.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, right? Who's on the board? Do you have a timer and everything?
Like a recreation ball cap that's from Running Out.
Did they do the Buckley Man?
Yes, that's Kevin.
Do you want a motion?
Okay.
Do we need to vote on that?
Sure. She seems to have them.
Sure, on that case, absolutely.
I have a motion to approve the Selectmen Liaisons, as identified by Kevin Calcutt, to Kevin, C.C., and Chris for the 15 liaison positions.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. One down, 14 items to go. Next, we have a candidate who has shown interest in our Town Government Study Committee. Mr. Sullivan, would you like to come up here and join us for a brief moment?
Sure.
How you doing tonight?
I'm great, how are you?
Very good, thank you. You absolutely do.
I didn't even stay in that chair for the rest of the evening.
It's great, yeah, it's comfortable.
So, thank you for your interest in the committee. Anybody who's willing to give their time for the betterment of the town is, you know, greatly appreciative of that. Did you wanna talk a little bit about your interest in the committee and what you're looking to contribute?
Sure, so, I'm a five-year resident of Norfolk, and at last town meeting last Tuesday, chairperson for the committee stood up and said they had vacancies. I think that the idea of a Town Government Study is very important. Most of the towns that I've spent my entire life in, Milton, Lincoln, Rhode Island, have those committees as well, not constantly standing, but in times when it's deemed necessary. One of the things that was brought to the attention of those at town meeting was the idea of how do we improve communication, always a tough nut to crack, whether we're talking in the business world or within family members, or in this case, you know, the township. So, that's something that I think I can bring some ideas to, and I'm willing to put the time and effort in to, to keep Norfolk moving forward.
Very good. Thank you very much. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Kevin?
Sure, right, just answer questions. What, what do you do? What's your experience?
I come from a tech background, so I've been in IT since 1998, give or take, a couple of years, and currently, I work for a consulting group, so I've given time specifically to nonprofits that focus on children. Some Boys and Girls Club work in Pawtucket, Rhode Island, and Pine Ridge, South Dakota, as well as a, a tech incubator, tech incubator in Cumberland, Rhode Island, and I currently serve on the Norfolk Cultural Council, so.
I definitely think there's some people who, who would agree with you that the tech background in terms of communication and getting the information out there, right?
Coming from a consultancy, solving that problem is very lucrative, so I can do it for free.
From our position, right, that's a, that's an important space to fill in terms of trying to figure out ways of making sure everybody knows early where we are in, in the processes, right?
Absolutely.
So, I ask a question.
Questions from your end, Chris?
No, I think it's great. I appreciate you volunteering.
So, if the committee is willing to have me and the board is willing to appoint me, I'm more than happy to give my time and effort.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. At this point, I would ask for a motion to appoint Gary Sullivan to the Town Government Study Committee for a term to expire on June 30th, 2020.
Make a motion to consider appointing Gary Sullivan to the Town Government Study Committee for an appointment which begins 2020, or ends 2020, is that what we...
Expires on June 30th, 2020, you got it.
June 30th, 2020.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much, Gary.
Welcome aboard.
Are we gonna say, are you gonna say say?
We'll clean it up, and then we'll get there by meeting three, I think, we'll get there.
I don't think we need to. It's more fun, it's organic.
Thank you very much again, Gary.
Thanks.
All right, item number three. I think this one is going to be on hold until after we come out of, okay, very good.
Item number four, you mean?
Numbered four, three in sequential order. I guess that is a little confusing, but I'll go with the numbers that are printed there.
Well, number one was calling it to order.
Gotcha.
My OCD's...
Item number five, please consider the following topics and actions for the H. Olive Day Roof Replacement Project. So, this is going to be centered around, one, designating a person, mainly the Chair, to execute the contract. The second is going to be discuss some next steps in terms of organizational things and items that we can do in terms of ensuring that, you know, execution is where we want it to be. Should we stick with the relatively easy one first, the authorization of the Chair to sign the MSBA? Does that make sense? In which case, we would need a motion to authorize the Chair to execute project funding agreement for the H. Olive Day Replacement Roof Project?
Make a motion to move the Board authorized Chair, Kevin Calcutt, to execute the project funding agreement for the H. Olive Day School Replacement Project.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I feel better. I do, I feel better.
All right, item number two. C.C., did you wanna talk a little bit about...
No, this is, and now, since you're the person who'll be signing things, so, when I got on the floor, and obviously apropos of nothing, but when I was speaking in favor of the, essentially allowing the bond for this to move forward, my thought was that we should, before signing anything, just 'cause you're authorized before signing anything, figure out, like, what we're talking about with the copper. Is there, are there other things, places that aren't required by the state that we can remove some expensive item and put in an as-good but less expensive item? That was kind of what we were talking about. And I had spoken with Dr. Allardy and other people who had indicated that they were already in process of saying, hey, you know, we've just gotten this bid back, they'd only gotten it back maybe a week before we got the information, and they had questions and things they were working on. And then I, and, and then I'd heard that, well, what they do is they sign the contract and then they negotiate, and that's bananas, and I'll talk about that in a second. But, so, that's got me thinking, well, I, I, I can't enter into a contract and then go back and negotiate, because the person's gonna be like, nope, signed a contract, that's what the contract says. But it did lead me to think, what, is there a benefit in having someone like Chris assist in going through and seeing what, you know, certainly with the help of someone like Matt or what it is that we can play with, and then what do we do in order to play with it? We have some time, it doesn't have to be today, but that was basically what I was thinking, is everyone had sort of indicated, I had asked, and other people from the school committee as well as from Dr. Allardy, et cetera, had indicated that they were working on making sure that there, if there were places to save money, and I keep using the copper 'cause it's the easy one, right? Originally, the copper was supposed to be the same price as metal, it's gonna be $80,000, comes in at over $200,000. That's an easy place for me to point out, you could save whatever the delta is between what it costs and what the metal is, right? But I keep using that. But does it make sense to have some, you know, someone liaise with, with, with knowledge such as Chris? Or just how do we sort of help make sure, I understand that, that it's the school committee's baby, but I also understand that as taxpayers, we're all kind of interested in making sure that if there's a way to save some money, we'd like to help. So, that was basically...
So, Matt is here, and he, he and I spoke earlier today about how that, the school group with him was planning to move forward, I think, I think he can provide that to you, and then I think having a discussion about having one of you participate in that and be able to bring the Board's voice and bring back the information probably would be helpful.
And I don't mean to volunteer you, Chris, I just, I know that you're the, I mean, I'd happily do it, but then I'd be constantly like this to Chris. What do I say? So...
So, Matt's available in the audience if you wanna do that, as well as I think I see, I know Midora is here from the school committee.
To clarify, there's not really much that's gonna change. Matt Hafner, Town of Norfolk. To clarify, there's not much that's going to change in the scope of the project. Everything that was in there, it was engineered. It's, only that's been highly contested is the copper instead of an aluminum. Copper is $2 a square foot, aluminum's $1.50 a square foot, same installation, so that's about the only performance this year we're gonna change, and we're talking under 10,000 square feet, or about 10,000 square feet, so we're talking a couple thousand dollars. The rest of it was all engineered per MSBA specifications and best practices, it was all very well designed, so there's not much we're gonna be able to back out of there. The, the sticking point has been the metal that was chosen for high performance, but our timeline has driven, well, we have scope of the project, the scope of projects, and we really can't reverse engineer too much else. We can change the, the product for the one, but the insulated paneling, the shingle material, the siding material, the masonry, that's all, it's what it's going to be, so...
So, okay, I under, I understand that, and it's a little different than what Dr. Allardy had said on the phone, that there were several areas that they were working on, trying to get a lower amount, and that's fine, I understand that maybe they worked on it and were rebuffed, but that's still a, a market amount of money, right? A buck fifty versus $2. I mean, oh, it's only 50 cents, but it's over, is there any movement there?
So, Greenwood is waiting for us, we've, they put a, they put a bid in and they've carried a number. We've identified that they can do better, but we haven't signed a contract and we're, they haven't given us a number yet to change the product, and what they're willing to do, but they said they carried, we asked them what they carried lines for, 'cause we had cost estimates, and that was the one that came in way higher than anticipated. It's, I mean, the bid was bid, they bid on it, so I can't really change the scope of the bid unless we rebid the entire project. So, we can ask them to pull back and we can try to negotiate, but it's, we can't change the bid and how it was bid at this point. I don't know if I'm explaining that right.
So, you're saying that last week, when we were told that we could negotiate...
We can negotiate.
...small little pieces within, without having to change the whole bid, just saying, hey, can we swap this out for that?
We can...
We can't do that.
We can, we can definitely use alternate and try to go down, but it's not going to change. If we put a flashing on there, we're not taking flashing out of the job.
Right.
But we can try to go down in quality or in materials, but it will negate some of it, but it's not gonna overall change the scope of the project or, but, and they won't really, they don't really wanna sit there and go back and forth until we have a contract, so they've already been asked to propose different materials, but we haven't heard back at this point.
Okay.
Let me take another try at this. So, the MSBA requirements are such that some things we cannot change, but within the ones we can, we want to authorize the, the award to them at the full price, and before the contract gets signed, work through some of these issues so that we can settle on a final price, understand what the reductions, if there will be, are, so we can know exactly what we're switching out, so that's what needs to happen. That's why we're not authorizing a contract tonight, we're only authorizing an award.
That makes sense, that makes sense.
And so...
Now, I get it.
Sorry, I'm sorry if I missed...
It's quite all right, I think between the two of us, we'll get there. And then, I think, if you, if you as a board wanna have somebody participate in that, that, that would be good, so that the lines of communication and everyone understands how it's going to flow, and whoever it is will learn more about roofs than they ever wanted to, if it isn't Mr. Weider, but...
I'm confused, because I thought we were not only authorizing Kevin to sign it, but we were actually authorizing him to sign a contract with Greenwood Industry.
I think what you're doing is you're allowing us to, the important thing is that we award it tonight, and my assumption in drafting this motion was that you would be comfortable once the contract was settled to then allow him to sign it. If the board would prefer to have that contract come back and, and see it all before he's approved, allowed to sign it, that would be another way to approach it, whichever you're more comfortable with, and I think that's the kind of thing, we have to figure out how we wanna work going forward.
Right, I'm comfortable with how I voted. I mean, I understood what the agenda said, and I'm comfortable with how I voted, which is to leave it to Kevin to sign it when it's ready to be signed, when everybody, smarter minds than me decide. My only question was, I had heard, oh, we're gonna sign the contract and then we're gonna negotiate the pieces that we're gonna negotiate, and I'm like, well, that's...
Sounds backwards.
I don't know roofs, but I know contracts, and that doesn't seem like the best way to go.
Your instinct was correct.
So, that was my only question, and, and, and Matt answered it, that there's, you've, that you've said, hey, can you tell us what other, you know, still within the confines of, of the bidding process, what other, you know, products would cost, and they said yes, and they haven't told you yet.
They have to provide us a schedule of values once everything comes in, and then we work out for the schedule of values, and that's part of the terms of the public instruction.
Right, and I understand that things were sort of, and that was one of the reasons, candidly, that I was, I said two weeks ago at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and then last week at the town meeting, I was mindful of the fact that the bid came in late. It came in high, but it came in late, and so everyone was sort of, but it was important to get done.
There, there's a couple of timeline issues, though, just there, there's a 30-day window once the con, once the bid opening was for us to sign the contract, and that was the third, so if we do convene again, we have to do it somewhat soon, and also, since the project's going to start very soon...
Right.
They have to submit everything, all products being used, they have to submit and it has to all be approved, so there's timelines, so, and we have to also order all the materials, so it's something I would like to definitely make sure that we don't wait too long to move forward.
Isn't that one of the reasons why we have Kevin?
So, we don't need to convene the board again to be able to do that, right?
Right.
This guy.
Right. We can do this in one step, or we can do it in two, whichever the Board's more comfortable.
I mean, I will, I'll agree with Matt on a number of items. One is you got a timeline. Obviously, they wanna get this going at the end of June, so, having to ask the contractor to go back, substitute certain things, after you pick what those substitutes are, asking Gail Associates to review those, making sure they meet the, the MSBA requirements, that probably would take longer than 30 days, so I think you've got a problem there. I will say, I think you're completely mistaken, Matt. Copper's two and a half times the price of aluminum, and copper is gonna require soldering, copper's gonna require copper gutters, the contractor is not gonna give you a penny back if you reduce it to aluminum. Copper is, again, is frivolous, it was frivolous in the beginning. The problem is, this proposal was put together to these specifications, it was approved at town meeting. It is frivolous, this conversation we're having tonight should've been had two months ago. Two months ago, somebody should've asked, does anybody know anything about roofing? Or let's talk to people who know something about roofing before we came forward with this proposal. That wasn't done. It's almost too late, because the funding is there, the work has to get done, the contractor has done a lot of work to put together a $3 million bond, bid. He's gotta get a $3 million bond for this project. He is not gonna go back and start cutting line items after a contract is signed, and if you ask him before the contract is signed, he's still gonna wanna make sure he's getting $3 million out of this. He's not gonna be willing to reduce it, and if he reduces it, he will cheapen the product, but you'll get the same price at the end of the day. We made a mistake here, I will say that. My personal opinion is we made a mistake. We brought this forward without a thorough review. A 50-year shingle could be put on those turrets and those monitors. If the roof's gonna be good for 50 years, why wouldn't the turrets be good for 50 years with a shingle? Copper was chosen for some odd reason. There's a number of other things in there. As I stated at town meeting, this is a 10-year warranty. We watched Gail fumble through his answer. It's a 10-year warranty labor and material. After 10 years, the only thing the town is getting is material defects, which means if a shingle fails due to manufacturing, they will replace it. They will not replace it if you nail in the wrong place, they will not replace for physical damage. You have no labor warranty after that, so your 50-year warranty is nothing but a sales pitch. It is a 10-year material and labor warranty for a commercial property which a school falls under.
But, I mean, this is all done now, right?
I am saying, there's nothing you can do now.
Right.
You know, either we vote to approve it, or we don't, or approve, you to sign it, or we don't, but there's no room to go back to the contractor at this point. So anybody stating there is room to go back to the contractor, it's a fallacy. There is no room to go back to him. You will not get any bang for the buck if you do.
Well, I think they're trying, they've indicated they're trying. I have no reason to believe that anyone's lying to me. And I think it's worth trying, they understand the timeline, they understand that they need to get it done within a particular amount of time. And if they run out of time, obviously they'll have to punt and do it the way it was originally decided. But I think it's worth trying. And we've already voted for Kevin, so.
Well, we voted for Kevin to authorize, or to sign the agreement. We still have to award the bid for replacement of the roof, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right, which is essentially what town meeting.
It's essentially just doing what town meeting did, correct? So it sounds like we're, we're not taking any additional action in terms of interjecting or having somebody be more involved with the discussions related to the replacement of materials in hopes of reducing costs. Is that correct?
I, I think you've, you've asked them to pull three million dollar bond. You can't ask them to go back now unless you're gonna start the process over. And I think it's gonna require too much. Matt won't be able to get the school done in the summer months if we delay it. I can't imagine, does, have you talked to Gail Associates, Matt, or to the contractor, find out if you do make changes, what the turnaround time is?
I've talked to Gail, I've talked to PMA, who's our OPM. There is a two week review period, but Greenwood is on board, they're ready to work with us and let us know what it is. But I'm not getting any feedback until there's a contract. There will be a reduction, again, the industry standards and the cost estimators all came back. There's a fifty cents difference per square foot, so we can go back and forth on that. But it was a performance based issue, it wasn't a frivolous based issue. So we can definitely try to pull it back, but it will take a couple of weeks and we do need that time for them to submit all the products to the engineering firm for approval.
So awarding it tonight gives us, allows us to get going on that process?
Right.
Figure out whether there's anything that can be saved. I scripted for the full amount just in case, you know, you're correct and we, there is no reduction that we can do. At least we can go ahead with the bid amount, with the goal being we're gonna end up with this amount slightly less than the bid.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, with that being the case, I would request a motion that the board vote to award the bid for the replacement of the H Olive de Ruth to Greenwood Industries in the amount of three million, forty-three thousand dollars and further to authorize the chair to execute the contract for this project.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one. All right, item number six this evening. Please consider authorizing the chair to execute a contract with Par Corporation for Stormwater Engineering Services. Blithe, do you want to take us through the very basic history of how we got here today, or?
Sure. In about, about fifteen years ago, the town entered into an agreement with a property owner at two oh one Main Street to acquire, to take some land from that property owner. And in return, agreed to allow that property owner to hook into the town's stormwater system at, at some point. I don't, can't tell you the history of why it's taken till now to start the process of reviewing the status of the stormwater system to ensure that there's enough capacity for a development at that site. But it has, and so if you recall, at town meeting, we had, one of the transfers was for nineteen thousand dollars to be able to pay for these services. The town planner went out and sought proposals from various engineering firms to do the analysis in order to give the town a report for it, and has recommended that based on the scope of their work, their references and their most favorable price, that we enter into this contract with Par Corporation. And so the result will be, tell us whether there is a capacity or there isn't. And we'll have to then take that up, whether that would require the town to do work to expand the system at that point or not. But this is the first step that we need to take to go down that path.
So at its core, we are fulfilling a commitment that was made a very long time ago.
In, in part, I mean, we're fulfilling the commitment to at least study it, make sure we know where we stand in 2019, whether or not we actually have to do something to allow that connection. If there is enough capacity, it's something we can't answer till we finish this step.
So is this, the, at paragraph six, the contract is just for study?
Correct.
That's correct.
And what's the address again?
Two oh one.
Two oh one Main Street.
Comments, questions?
I think it's, uh, it's long in coming, and it's great to see it's starting to move in the right direction.
Absolutely.
So hopefully this will, uh, give us good news.
CeCe, anything on your end?
No.
Very good. In that case, I would accept the motion that the board vote to authorize the chair to execute a contract with Par Corporation for Stormwater Engineering Services.
So moved.
Seconded.
Further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor-
Blithe, you're gonna work with Rich to see if we can expedite them on once the contract is signed.
We are.
To get out here. Great.
Good point, thank you. In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, more authorizations for the chair. Blithe, you want to take us through a brief history on this one?
So the town belongs to the Southeastern Regional Services Group, I think that's what those acronym stands for. And it's a group of twenty-three towns that has for years done a number of things, including bid out items that are not necessarily available on state contract. And it's more conducive for all the communities to work together to bid these things, likely get some better prices. Twenty-three towns aren't doing the same exact bidding process every year, and so on. This is the first of a couple that we'll bring to you. This one is for liquid potassium hydroxide and orthopolypophosphate. These are both water treatment chemicals. Please don't ask me what they do, I can't answer that. But spoken with the DPW director, these prices are competitive to last year. These are things they use regularly, and he recommends that the board authorize the contract for these for FY twenty.
Additional questions? CeCe? In that case, I will accept the motion that the board vote to authorize, I'm sorry, that the board vote to award a contract for certain water and sewer treatment chemicals for fiscal year 2020 as recommended by the SIRD purchase group, and authorize the chair to execute the award documents.
So moved.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving right along. The next item is to consider authorizing the town administrator to sign a FEMA reimbursement grant request for expenses incurred by the town for the March eighteenth, 2018 snowstorm. Any background there?
It snowed.
It did.
It snowed so much that, um, what usually happens is the governor declares a state of emergency and determined what counties are eligible. And when that happens, it triggers FEMA being able to offer some funds to help address the costs that communities incurred. And for this storm, I'm, I haven't seen all the paperwork that DPW had to put together, but it likely was costs incurred by themselves, any outside contractors they had to hire, police, police details perhaps, or fire responses. It is quite a lot of work to put together in a way that FEMA finds acceptable. But it must have been significant enough in Norfolk that the total is almost ninety-four thousand dollars. So it takes a long time, what, the, the, the whole state and federal process, this gets turned into the local emergency management group in Framingham. And then this gets approved by the board, and then we wait for the funds. We hope it will, they will come in by June thirtieth, but that may not. If it does, it's wonderful news for our free cash for next year, because it's ninety-three thousand dollars that we didn't budget for or anticipate. It goes into the general fund, become part of free cash and could be utilized by the town later on for some other purpose. Does not go back into the accounts for which it was spent, because this was last fiscal year.
Very good. Well, we do appreciate the, the works of the public works and finance teams to be able to gather all this and put it together so that the town could get a grant or reimbursement like this. I think I did mistakenly say authorize a town administrator before. I think that it is listed as the chair.
So this was one where DPW advised me that generally the town administrator has just signed it. But wanting to be careful with, you know, all of us being new, I put it on here, but I structured it that way. And I thought when we get to the item to discuss the, you know, the board and town, town administrator's roles and responsibilities, we could clarify this, because we could spend a lot of time having you execute contracts at meetings. And we should decide, I think, how we want to do that going forward. So I just wanted to be careful, and I put it on here this way. If you'd rather the chair sign it, she did already do the paperwork with town administrator on it, because she assumed that's how we would. So I'd ask for your latitude on this one, and we'll figure it out going forward.
That's agreeable to me. Anybody has any objections?
I think as long as we bring it to the board, like we've done with this one. That's the important thing, transparency for everybody to understand it.
In that case, I would accept a motion that the board authorize the town administrator to execute a FEMA reimbursement to the town of Norfolk for the March thirteenth, 2018 snowstorm.
So moved.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item, please consider the reestablishment of the Economic Development Committee. So this is one that I had proposed, given some of the direction of some of the conversation that's been going on around town about the ways that we could, you know, get ourselves into a more structured and focused plan, identify some paths for us to be able to, you know, get some of the amenities and the services and the things that contribute to the quality of life here in town, going, moving, or at least get it on a roadmap. We have some great motions in that being done right now with the B one zoning working committee, where we're working with a state agency to assist in some of the planning and outline of how we get to that point. But my interest in this committee was to kind of carry that work and move it forward into the execution stage. The B one working zoning committee is gonna propose some zoning amendments, I believe, at this fall town meeting. After that point though, there is nobody really to take it and run with it from there, if they are so passed. So I thought that by charging a committee like this with not only taking those recommendations and working with the town and with the residents and with the community to find the best way to develop the land and those properties that we have available to us, but also to work on the marketing aspect of it and find ways that we can connect with the community to find our unified and aligned path forward as far as what we want to do with these areas in town. So I'll open it up to the board for any comments, questions, or thoughts.
My initial reaction was, where we have the B one committee, I would think this is almost too much of an overlap. You know, I'd almost like to charge the B one with moving forward, once they come to town meeting in the fall. I know it's difficult to get members for that committee, as well as have attendance at that committee.
Right.
And I think if we, you know, maybe, it gets to a point where we have too many committees.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and where we have a B one committee, and really, everything you just referred to is, is items that people have asked for in the center of town. This seems to be the focus of economic development, the center of town. Not Route one A, not down further on Rockwood Road, but the B one. So I almost feel like we'd be overlapping too much, and I'd rather see the B one, once they propose zoning articles, hopefully be allowed to continue to charge forward with economic development. And obviously, I think they still could use more members. You're, I think you're early as own for that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a full board or a full committee, but maybe if there's other interested people who want to get involved with that, maybe have them join in. But I don't know if we need two committees sort of charged with the same sort of a task of trying to develop our B one. That's my, that was my thought on it.
Understood. I, I intended that the scope would be a little larger than just B one. I'm not saying that there are vast commercial opportunities springing up around town these days, but, you know, I didn't want to have it just be focused only on B one. I wanted there to be the ability to look at other things in a creative manner as well. The other point to that is that the B one zoning committee is currently made up of a representative from just boards and committees in town with a couple of resident contributors. We have a member of the Board of Health, a member of the ZBA, a member of the Planning Board, a member of the Board of Selectmen, the town planner sits as ex officio. And then we have two residents who are also serving. For the Economic Development Committee, my hope was that we'd be able to include some members of the community that may not necessarily be residents, but business owners, developers, people that could have input on effective ways that we can move forward with these types of lofty plans and ideas that we have, that are more realistic and be able to offer their expertise.
The only issue I see with that is, we'll take, say, a Tommy DePlacido, where he does a lot of development in the center here. It may, it may not allow him then to come forward with another proposal.
There's an aspect of conflict, yeah.
And, you know, you have, you have a couple of developers who are, who have development properties. Him, Al Quaglieri, I think are the two most notably that have, both have properties, Peter Chapman has two oh one. All these are gonna probably be coming forward to us. The, um, the Duncan Donut brothers, John and-
Yep.
John, they're gonna be coming forward to us. So I think if you, those seem to be some of our more prominent developers who are gonna be coming towards the town in the future. So this may not scare them away, but may limit their participation, which is why I thought it might be a problem. Some of the people who we would want on these boards are also the same people who might be coming before us.
Doing the work, right.
Either Planning Board or Zoning Board.
Right.
So that, that was, that was what I saw as maybe a problem. But I agree, I'd love to see more participation. I think you mentioned that some business owners, plus again, more additional people. But I think it's gonna be difficult because of the type of development we have. We only have four or five parcels in the center of town.
Yeah.
They're developable, and I think most of them are owned by some of the prementioned people.
Right.
So I think that's the difficulty in that.
Yeah. CeCe, what do you think?
I think, I hear what Chris is saying about B one. But I also think, and I know that Chris and I may not agree on this, just based on what candidates might, I think was the only, the only knowledge that I have on it. But I like the idea, and I'm certainly mindful of the fact that it's tough to find people to volunteer for stuff. Because we already have this group that's somewhat or, you know, it's organized, but maybe it needs some more members. But I like the idea of a broader scope, and, and, you know, at least maybe giving it a shot. And maybe we don't get enough people, so we tried and, and failed. But there is more than just the center of town, and I like the idea of having a plan, even if the ultimate plan is, nope, we're not gonna do, right? We're gonna look at the whole town, and we're gonna look at Rockwood, and we're gonna look at one A, and we're gonna look at the hospital, and we're gonna look at it all and say, nope, we're not doing anything. But I like the idea of, of a group that's focused, is, is the, is the whole town. And maybe they work in concert with, but don't recreate the wheel with, right? I understand what you're saying, but having a, having a, it's kind of like a Venn diagram. And I think that there's value in having both. Understanding that realism may come into play and we may not get the people. And I know in the past we've had it, and, and it's, it's been a struggle for, for members. And also, when the people are on it, then they come up with all these great ideas and we don't implement them either, because nobody wants to, or they're not realistic. Or they get shot down, and then they get frustrated, and they go, well, what's the point of me doing this? And then they leave. But I, I still like the idea of having a, of a plan. And I think that a plan requires a look at the economic development of the whole town outside of just B one and outside of just real estate, personal property taxes.
So as it stands right now, I do believe that the B one working zoning committee is intended to disband after fall town meeting. There are a couple considerations, considerations there, mainly the funding from the state. Their funding runs out at that point, so we will no longer have a state representative working, a state agency representative working with us. But further, everybody on that board, like I said before, for the most part, has respective commitments to other boards and committees. I don't think I intended for them to necessarily overlap at any point. I think that the intent was to discuss reinstating the committee, work on building the committee over the course of the next couple of months, let them come up with a charge, and then there'd be a handoff essentially at town meeting, when that is either passed or not passed. They have their direction, and then they kind of take the baton and run with it from there. So I don't necessarily feel like there would ever be some overlap where two committees are talking about the same thing at once, if that was the concern. I think Blithe has included some sample charges from different towns in the packets. Did anybody have the opportunity to read through tho, read through those?
It was Holliston, Lexington, you had, is that right?
Yes, if you Google it, you'll find more, but that's what I included, just for information.
Yeah, I mean, I guess part of the problem is, we don't really have a, we have a master plan that hasn't been updated in-
Years.
You know, and, well, it's, it's the original one was, what, ninety-nine, then we updated in two thousand and seven, but it hasn't been touched since then. How do you send an economic development group out there? Well, we really don't even have a master plan up to date. I think, you know, and, and as CeCe said, they'll come up with a lot of great ideas and will say, nah, that doesn't, that's not consistent with the master plan. So I think that falls into it as well, where our master plan isn't updated. I mean, I think it's a good idea, but- I mean, I think it's a good idea, but maybe, maybe we revisit this right around fall town meeting, after the B one zoning group has proposed all their changes. Then we get an economic development group together to sort of charge forward along with, by then we might have some more, um, info on the master plan, where we're going with that. I don't know if that's a thought. I just hate to see, try to form a group over the summer that, you know, they're going to, you're going to have overlaps.
That's a good point.
Because their focus is going to be the center.
That's a good point.
And, uh, the B one of them are going to be back and forth and I think we're going to get a lot of mix of ideas and maybe not move forward. And where we don't have a master plan up to date, it, I think it adds another dynamic.
Just to make a quick point on the master plan, we had talked with, um, the B one zoning committee about focusing on a master plan revival first before going down the path of looking at zoning changes. And it was recommended that we wait until after as it wouldn't have that much of an impact on zoning considerations as it pertains to the things that we were talking about there. But I do understand what you're saying, that you need a reference document to go back to in order to maintain focus and stay effective. So I get where you're going there.
I think you're almost saying, I, I, I guess I get what you're saying too, that nobody's around during the summer and, or if they are, they're pulled in that's eleven D different directions already. And some of the books that you made pull for the new committee to be, because it's a lot of spread pretty thin. It isn't at least for trying or, or sort of saying, because we're, it's what I'm hearing is we're getting it rolling with the idea that it doesn't really roll out until after fall town meeting. So we're just trying to start to put bodies in seats and solicit interest and see what's going on. But to your point, is there value in exploring, exploring the master plan in concert? Why aren't we talking about a master plan then? If that's what's preventing us, I mean, I think it's important to start rolling on economic development. And I think, I, I personally like the idea of trying to front end load so that when town meeting is done, B one has disbanded, there's already something in place rather than, okay, now that's disbanded, now we're going to start the process of filling the pipe. Like you end up with another six months, although to your point, it's cold and people are around. But what if, if what's, if one of the problems is the, the idea that there's no, no sort of nouveau master plan, right? It's eleven years out of date, twelve years out of date, um, cannot be just a part of the summer core.
Yeah, well, the master plan update undertaking is a fairly large one. And if we decide to go out of house, which I imagine we would at this stage of the game where we are as a community, um, it would also be an expensive one.
Then we don't end up with a master plan and we just end, we need to, then I'm back to thinking that we at least need an economic development plan. Because if it's going to be overly expensive, I think everybody, you maybe, if you polled the group, you're going to get, if you polled sixteen people, there'll be sixteen answers to what direction the town will be in.
Right.
And I think we heard that even again at candidate's night. There are some people who don't want a single other same development, they just want to walk power paths. And there's people who want sky rises and there's everything in between. Um, but at its core, I think most people would say, well, we want to keep the flavor of the town. But it wouldn't be nice to not be so dependent upon, um, one particular source of income for the town. I, I still think there's value in an economic development committee. But if you don't think that we're going to get anybody to, I mean, where's the harm in, I guess that's the question. I can see what you're saying, if nobody's going to join it, then it doesn't happen.
I don't want to deflate people. You start to form this, I'll give you the, the real naysayer. So we developed this committee, they start working over the summer, they start getting some great ideas. We go to fall town meeting and everything present, uh, everything presented by the B one zoning district is voted down. So there's going to be no change in town center zoning. What's the economic development committee going to do? The town center is not going to change at all. So where are they going to go from there? They're going to be charged with these great ideas and we're going to say, sorry, everything you were thinking is never going to happen. Now go off and develop.
Right.
And they'll look at you and go, where, one A, Southwood?
Well, hopefully they can pivot, right, because that's the problem is if they get voted down, if, if town meeting votes down B one, we have two options, pivot or just say, okay, and walk off the field.
And I don't think that the only charge that you would be focused on as an economic development committee would be so focused on just what do you want to change? I think there's other things that you can do to structure how the function and organization of your committee is going to work in terms of building the things you'll be responsible for. Just a couple of ones I highlighted was, you know, encouraging business investment in the conservative, commercial zoning districts, increasing, uh, minimizing impact on local services, advising the Board of Selectmen and other town boards on issues concerning bylaws, policies, regulations, and zoning that foster commercial growth. And I don't think it's so oriented on, we want to put this restaurant right here and this is how we're going to do it. I think it's a little bit broader and then you eventually focus to those kinds of things once we get past town meeting, if it goes one way or another.
I, I, I don't mind doing it, I just think it's, I think it's premature. I think you got to let the B one do their job. And then you got to see where we are. And I, I know you want to have them in place, but it's going to take a while. And I think you really want to find out what the B one comes up with and what's proposed at town meeting, what's approved. You know, everyone, all the developers I've talked to have said the same thing. You don't have infrastructure in your center.
Right.
Without infrastructure, forget it. So the zoning becomes the vehicle to change, to change our infrastructure.
Right.
And without that, then, yeah, we are moving to other areas, you're right. But I don't know how much control we have over, I mean, Rich McCarthy should be already working, trying to figure out something to do with Southwood. That should be a constant day to day project, is what do we do with Southwood?
Right.
And development, I've, and I, I think this, the, um, C districts, you know, they're pretty well established. I don't know if they're, I think Sharon Ave's still got some room for development. But I just, I don't know if that's really, I haven't heard that amongst people being the charge, that what, what they want to see in Norfolk. They want to get a sense of community in the center of town.
Right.
So I think the B one sets the standard for where we're going. And I just, I just don't want to have, you know, people like David and Emery joining this committee and then in September we say, well, it's not going to work out because we're not going to make any changes and be deflated. I would rather wait for them to see that we're going to make some real changes in our B one district. And then we're going to charge you guys with really great ideas for the B one, as well as that make, will carry forward to the C districts. That's my thought. I just think, starting it too early, I mean, I've heard you don't have enough members, you don't have a lot of members showing up to your, to your B one group meetings all the time. So that makes it difficult.
But those are board members who already have other commitments, not a
Yeah, so, and again, even on this one, you're, again, you're, you're going to be subject to almost the same type of thing. You know, the same people volunteer for the same thing over and over and over again. I think you can certainly take a list of names if you want to start gathering names of people who have an interest in it, certainly. But I don't know if we're ready to establish that board yet. I just think it's one more committee. I mean, we have a government study committee that's looking at that, we have a B one. I think we've got to see where they come up with, and both of them are going to be proposing for fall town meeting.
Yeah.
And maybe worthwhile to just wait, that's my thought. But I certainly, um, if you guys would like to, I'm certainly not going to oppose it.
Can I make a proposal? I would propose that we hold off on this until our next meeting and we ask Rich to come in, Blythe? And maybe Rich could give us some more clarity into what the outline process looks like for the updating of our master plan and see how that falls into line. And maybe that'll give us a little bit better direction in terms of how we want to line this up sequentially. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Yep.
Got it.
Very good.
So do you want a motion to hold off, stay this till the next meeting? Or do you want to just?
No, that makes sense. I'll accept a motion to hold off and stay this item until our next meeting on June fourth?
So moved.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much for entertaining that, I appreciate it. Next item up is please discuss a process to search and to fill the position of fire chief. Background insight.
One of the most important positions that you have in town, uh, in charge of emergency and, uh, emergency fire, rescue, medical services. Since we don't have a in-house candidate, we need to look out of house. And so what I've laid out for you is what I think a fairly typical process is for a position like this. You could substitute police chief in here someday for this, same type of process. It is, the board, we can go a couple of different ways. I've suggested we do a combination of, of staff-supported and a consultant. I think staff can handle the, uh, in-house aspects of advertising jobs. Managing, um, a small, a committee of people that you would like to do the vetting process before we get to finalists. Um, I think the most important aspect of all of that is someone to run an assessment center. Assessment centers are very typical in the police and fire world to put several candidates through various scenarios and situations that they might be faced with, um, in, in emergencies, dealing with residents, making presentations, um, difficult, um, employee issues, to get a good sense and, and watch that all happen and get a good sense of whether these candidates are the best ones to be, to fit in our community and represent the type of situations we might have. Gives you a very good window into that. And then, once you're finished with that, the finalists would meet with the board, not dissimilar to what happened with the town administrator, uh, for the board to, um, make its, and I to make its final decision of who you would like to, um, offer a contract to. We did not plan this in the FY twenty budget because we didn't know it was going to be happening when the FY twenty budget was put together. Having said that, um, we've gotten the names of several firms who do that sort of work. I think conservatively, we're talking the seven thousand or so dollar range. I think in talking to the finance director, we could probably absorb it in the budget. But worst case, we can make a transfer in the fall if it, you know, it looks like we've, uh, we'll need a little more dollars, um, after that process is done. If we started this next week, I think it's probably a ninety day process. By the time we start, gather resumes, um, form, form a committee, you know, do that initial screening and, and get to the assessment center, schedule that and so on. And then, um, how long would it take for someone to leave, assuming leave a job and start in Norfolk? That's a kind of a high level. Um, it could all be done by a consultant. Um, there are ones out there who will do fire searches for you. Um, and I think there are benefits to that, but I'm also trying to be mindful of the cost.
Right.
What is the, um, what would be the premium for having a consultant do that? Or you'd bring, bring the finalists to the board? Now, my concern is, um, you know, I, nothing against town administrators, but a fire chief is a much different, I think, role. Um, it has a much different skill set. And so, I mean, having a, where we have town administrator, we had people on different boards, things like that. I think in this case you have a real, but it's a specialist, I would think, as a fire chief.
So are you asking about a, a committee or a consultant?
No, a consultant, what, I mean, seven thousand gets us the basic bare bones.
From, and from talking to some of our neighbors who have been through this process recently, what they're finding is, especially if they're doing the process on their own, they're getting kind of the same kind of candidates are kind of cycling through these processes and you might, a consultant might, I'm not saying will, might, um, have a better handle of who's out there, who's looking, who could they attract to apply for this job, who might not otherwise. With all due respect, I don't think Scott and I are the best ones to do that. We could certainly place ads and talk to some people we know, but we may not have a handle on, you know, that group of pool of candidates. So a consultant might bring you candidates who might have not otherwise applied, but it's not a sure thing.
The seven thousand dollar consultant?
Seven thousand dollars is just to run the assessment center. That's just one step in the process. We could hire a consultant to start and do the whole process from advertising to, you know, negotiating a contract. Uh, I know that that would cost more, I'm, I'm guessing it would be maybe ten or fifteen thousand dollars.
Above the seven, ten or fifteen in addition to the seven?
Seven to ten.
Plus the seven?
I would say ten to fifteen, just because I'm, know what we paid for the town administrator and that didn't include an assessment center. So you add that to it, I'm thinking it's more in the, you know, ten to fifteen range. But I could be wrong and we would have to check.
What have our neighbors done? I know Rentham just did a fire chief and I think after they did their whole search, they hired someone within. Um, I don't know about, is it Medfield just did a fire chief as well?
I don't know if Medfield, but, um, Franklin has, is, is, is in the process right now or just finishing up. I think at the very most, at the very least, um, they've at least hired someone else to do the assessment center. I know, um, Mendon did one last year or so. They used, um, MRI from New Hampshire, who does, also does searches for other types of physicians. Um, they hired the fire chief from Uxbridge to go to Mendon. So, um, I mean, what you really have are people who
Did they went to New Hampshire to get someone to move the fire chief from Uxbridge to Mendon?
MRI does a lot of work in Massachusetts on searches for various jobs that, I think a lot of their work is in this area. They're one of the major players. And they've done fire studies, I think they have some background in, I'm not
Oh, no, I understand that. I'm just saying it's, it sounds funny that, I bet that Uxbridge and Mendon probably know a little, right? It just seems funny that they had to go up to New Hampshire to get their neighbor.
Can do it either way, I think it's, I think it's something, like I say, I think we can do it in-house, I, you know, and, but I don't, the only thing I'd say we don't have is the knowledge of who's out there in various fire departments, who might be a, a captain ready to move up or a deputy who's ready to make a move. You know, I don't have my finger on that pulse in the fire world. I can simply call my colleagues and say, hey, don't really want to steal from you, but is, who's out there, who's looking, who can we get to apply?
Just go to Franklin and get the names of the ones who don't get to be chief over there and bring them over here and we'll review them. I can make it easy.
That is, that's a choice.
Right.
Two questions I have, um, one is, are, are we required to do an in, in-town search first?
I'm going to, I'm going to turn that over to the, uh, HR director.
Yeah, we're required to post the position internally first for
Thank you.
Pursuant to the bylaws, right? We have to do it, before we do our nationwide search, we have to search in, internally, correct?
Correct. We ha, we, we have posted this position already, it was posted back before, when Peter applied.
Okay.
So we could post it again, but that's a, it's a ten, ten business day posting period.
And so we met that requirement.
Yes.
And then, um, the second observation, and I don't want to be penny wise, pound foolish, is, is the idea that it, that some, that the search company would know of someone who was ready to move up and that person themselves wasn't on the internet looking for what's out there. Like hadn't occurred to them that they were ready until the, I, I just
That's the big benefit of that cost, I think, is that person has their finger on the pulse of all those different people that are out there to be able to pull those in.
I just don't believe that there's, that the people who are ready to move aren't actually actively searching to see what's up, to make the move. Like I, I just don't believe there's someone who's like, if only someone would come to my door and ask me if I could be a police, I mean, a fire chief.
I mean, I'm, I'm not well intertwined with the world of recruiting, but it's my understanding that the real benefit comes from those people who aren't necessarily looking, but could be easily convinced if somebody were to pitch them on a position.
That makes sense.
So it's, it's a maybe. I, I wouldn't want to sell you on that it's going to
No, 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 I certainly understand that. I just, what I was hearing was that they would know the people that, that were ready to move. And I was thinking the people who are ready to move probably are already, when they get home from work.
Scouring, right.
Scrolling to see what's new on the sites that these things are put up on, right? Because there's sites where municipality jobs, fire jobs are.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm more inclined to, I would like to know the cost of asking someone, a consulting firm, soup, soup to nuts other than negotiating the contract, which can be done with the board after we meet the person.
We certainly can get that information.
I think instead of the, the other method of us posting and a seven working group committee. And I think that just, it's a field that let the experts do what they do best.
They may be able to turn it around more quickly too.
Yeah, and bring us some good candidates.
Do you want to have a, a, a search committee who will do the screening and sit in on the assessment center and give you a recommendation of finalists? Or would you like to have it handled by staff and yourselves?
I'm more inclined to say let the experts bring it to the Board of Selectmen and avoid the seven member working group.
My only recommendation would be to possibly, and I haven't spoken with the other department about this, but, um, include the police chief somehow in that process. It's a strong working relationship between these two departments, they need to support each other. And I think it would be beneficial at some point to have some involvement, um, to make sure that we're making a good choice for the town. Doesn't necessarily have to be a committee that includes
I was going to say, he's not going to, it's not any directional impact that he's making, he's merely assisting with
You might
the assessment and recommendation perhaps to the board, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, I, I'm just bringing it up, it's, it's just like I said, in, in most communities, as it is here, it's a close working relationship. They're often at emergencies together, it's, you know, it's a really, relationship you want to have to be, you know, very positive and fruitful. So I just suggest that that's something that we think about. Okay. I get it. I get it.
So what I hear is that at this point, we're going to be looking for some quotes on a more expansive recruitment process with the services of a consultant. Um, and at that point, we'll be able to make a decision as to which path we'd like to take, to be able to move forward. One thing I would propose, that in the interim, just for the sake of completeness, that we post the position internally for the next coming ten days-
True.
-just to ensure that we cover our bases and ensure that nobody has changed their mind in that time.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Great idea.
Makes sense.
Very good. So I do not believe that we require a motion or action here. Is that correct?
Got a giant motion right there, very good.
Not bold enough, though.
Bold and catty.
Yeah, we need to highlight it.
Bigger box.
I could do that. I need this feedback.
All right. Item number eleven this evening. Please discuss the board's goals and work plan for the ensuing fiscal year. Um, during our workshop session, we discussed the, the need for some direction on the board and, you know, the benefit of having some direction in terms of our aligned focus as a board, how we're progressing and benchmarking our progress as we make our way through the year. Um, I offered a format that, uh, we shared with everybody from the goals that we submitted last year. Um, and I think that the intent for tonight's meeting was to see if anybody had any outcomes or any ideas as to items that they'd like to add to that outline, so that we could compile it into one document and have that be our guiding light, for lack of a better term, as we move into the rest of this year. So I'll open it up to the other members. CC, if you want to hit first, I'll go to you first.
Um, I have no guiding light to, to, to offer to the group. Um, I thought that what, what we spoke about last time was, was comprehensive. I think it is a, we'll sort of forgive the colloquialism, be a living document, that can be modified as, you know, as things happen, just sort of like when we were talking a little bit ago about, um, economic development, which devolved into sort of a master plan, and sort of realized that that was sort of an overarching need. I think that, right now, without the benefit of, of some traction underneath me at the time, I don't have anything to add from two weeks ago.
Gotcha. Very good. Sir?
And I think, uh, I think you actually had it in your profile, was the master plan was on here-
Mm-hmm.
-as one of the strategic guidance. So I think, yeah, the master plan's important. Uh, obviously, economic development. We've heard a lot of clear during this last year's campaign, and I think in your campaign the year earlier, we heard about economic development. I think, um, one thing I didn't see on here is, I think, is, um, or it might be on here in a different wording, is the, uh, is really people wanting to see government at its best, whether it be consolidation of government, or just, again, you hear the word, a lot of overhead for a small town. Um, whether that's true or not, we can, we can explore. But I think a lot of, I think there's consolidations in issue. I think, um, master plan's an issue. Um, obviously, looking where we can save spending to keep our tax rate in check. And then, um, I always think we have to still look a lot to our elderly. What are we doing for our elderly? And, um, obviously, I'll be charged with that as the liaison. But, um, I think we have to look at that. Is, is there anything? I mean, I think it's, um, someone came up and told me about Waltham. Actually, people over seventy-five, they lock in their tax rate, and they don't raise their tax rate after they're seventy-five years old, which is an interesting, I haven't had a chance to explore yet, but an interesting idea. You know, is there some things we can do for seniors, um, that we maybe want to look at or explore? I know, I think we offer work programs or something for seniors in town.
Senior work off?
Yeah. But, uh, is there other things we can do? And that was an interesting, I had never heard that before, but I understand it was Waltham that does lock in the rate, which is interesting.
There are, there are communities where you can basically defer, so that when you're not in your house anymore, you would still, you'll pay that back. Um, so you're still gonna end up paying the same amount of tax, you're just not paying it currently. Um, and you have a, you know, you have an outstanding-
Lean, basically.
Lean, if you will, with the town. Uh, some communities do that. We can get you information on that.
I think that's a great idea. I like the idea of coming up, and obviously, Waltham maybe has a little bit more robust commercial real estate-
Absolutely.
-to, to, to ours. But I love the idea of kind of come up with different creative ways, that you don't just have to be the person who has so much need that they qualify, but just recognizing that anybody on a fixed income, when they get to a particular age, would appreciate having a deferral, or a freeze, or any number of different creative things to work off, just to give people more-
I mean, even, even senior housing. I mean-
Yep.
I, I didn't realize that Hillcrest has waiting lists already, and we really don't have any other senior housing. And, um, and I've actually talked to a couple developers about, have you thought about this? And most of them are actually unaware of it. They say, you have, you don't have a problem with senior housing, do you? And you say, yeah, we do. We don't have any. So it's interesting, but maybe-
Well, and wouldn't senior housing help out in other areas as well?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, in respect to, um, 40B and so forth?
Yep.
I do, I do want to add, because I don't know if, you know, I've sort of been saying, I like what you've developed, and I, but some of, you remind me that much of what we talked about, what you developed in your master plan was, was done on an audio, not on a, on a video. So I don't know if, if people would benefit from you disseminating this.
Absolutely. That's the intent. Once we were able to collect everything, input from everybody in a line, to have that be out.
I feel like people might be hearing this in a vacuum, right? We talked about it in, in, uh, our workshops. That wasn't on tel, that wasn't televised. It was audio, but it wasn't, it wasn't televised. And, um, and, and Chris sort of giving it life, talking about it, made me think that certainly we want people to know, we're not, so they're not at home. All two of them are at home wondering, what is going on? What are we talking about? But I think that, I know Chris, for Chris, and I know for you last year, and myself, the, and, and you coming on, transparency was so big. And your, your whole first, um, section really speaks to that, I would think, and ideas for ensuring that people feel like things aren't being, aren't happening behind closed doors, or in, you know, um, dark hallways, or whatever other-
Absolutely. Well, one of the things that we, we pushed for, as I believe we moved into February with the board of selectmen last year, was to give an update on our roles. And I think what we did is we went line by line through that entire document and updated everybody. This is complete. This is in process. This is something that we have yet to get to. So that that was out there, and we identified, hey, this is where we are after half a year. This is where we want to focus on moving forward. So we, we did get that out there in an open forum in a meeting, but we never did put a document out there, per se, for people to reference. And I think that's the intent this time around.
Yeah, I like, I like the idea of, yeah, just having it, um-
Absolutely.
That's right. We talked about, because you had all of my, my current one doesn't have color. My, my recollection from last time is that we had lots of different color, including salmon.
Oh, yes.
And we wanted a key. So, um, that's right. So I'm glad to hear that it'll get, it'll get published, because I think that, um, if it's a living document, and people, other people can say, oh, I like this, or what do you mean by, or that?
Speaking of publishing, if I can go off, off track a little bit, um, what are your thoughts about us putting the agenda packet, everything that's not executive session, on the website as well? So if someone wants to be at home following along, they can look at the same piece of paper that you got.
Full-heartedly agree.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. We need to work with IT to make some adjustments on the website, but, you know, if we can, if we can scan and send an, an email package of it to you to read for the weekend, we can just as easily put it on the website, or you could grab it from the website. You know, anyone could grab it from the website.
Right.
So.
One thing I will mention, Chris, is in working pretty closely with Sheri Norman last year, once, um, the board of selectmen took over many of the departments and the intern with the town administrator leaving, she had some great ideas on, uh, programs such as the age-friendly community program from AARP, which grades each community on their, you know, accessibility and the benefits that they have to an aging community. And, uh, she did outline a fantastic plan to be able to get us to a better place in terms of that designation. So I think those things are already well in motion, and Sheri has been a great proponent for that.
Great, great.
All right. So in terms of pulling this all together, it sounds like we have a general idea of where the document lies right now. Um, adding in a few things to maybe tweak and emphasize, um, some of the items that Chris had mentioned. Efficiency, I heard. I heard the need for a, a second set of eyes to ensure that we're working as efficiently as possible. A big focus on the master plan, its update, and what's gonna, what that process is gonna look like. And, uh, additional efforts in terms of addressing the concerns of the elderly community here in town. Um, a couple of things that I had that I wanted to add, and a lot of what I had was focused on community engagement, like CC had noted. Um, I did put items in here, such as, uh, starting a newsletter for town happenings, product statuses, notices, and events for the community. Um, trying to host a town hall forum type event, where people would be able to ask questions of general leadership here in town. Uh, meeting public comment period, uh, we're gonna try to assess and find a good way for us to be able to host a period or a section of the meeting where public comment would be allowed. You need to work through the technicalities of how that would work. Um, looking at some potential partnerships with the Boy Scouts and other products that they can do for us around town and work with them. Um, looking at some office hours for residents or town hall employees, so that we have that kind of openness and ability for people to feel like we're accessible. And, um, I, I did want to emphasize that I do want to explore the potential of implementing a visual budget component to our website. That would give people, um, some clarity and some understanding with an interactive tool, to be able to see where their money goes here in town, and how that changes on a year-to-year basis.
There is a, there are a couple of companies out there doing that. Uh, one of them, uh, that I've used is called ClearGov. They're located in Hopkinton. If you go to their website, they have basically taken data that they mine from this Department of, um, of Revenue and turned it into graphics, so you can, you can see how much of your dollar goes towards, say, schools. And then, it benchmarks you against other communities, so you can see how much it costs per pupil is in here versus in Medfield versus whatever the communities are. Um, it has been a fairly low-cost opportunity to do it, and he goes, you can put the link around your website, people can look at it. It's not, it's only data pretty much from the past. It's not necessarily look forward, okay, this is what happens if you pass this twenty-twenty budget. Um, but if you go and look, um, they've, they've set up a page for every town. Um, and so the data that they have there now for Norfolk is pretty limited, but you could pick a different one that is one of their communities and see what it offers, and see if that's something that you think is a good, is it what you're looking for? Um, and I say, there are more companies than them. That's just the first one that comes to mind.
I don't know how realistic it is, but I'd love, I think you're the one, you, Kevin, are the one who mentioned it first. And I really liked the idea, and, um, recognizing Mr. Rosenberg in the audience, I think he's mentioned it many times in the past, the idea of, early on in the process, right? So in the fall, when the communities, that the organizations start ramping up about what they're gonna need for money, and then, in, over the winter, when the budget is in its, its sort of infancy, um, putting it up, even though with the caveat that it's subject to change, but letting people know super early on what it is people are asking for, understanding that they may then back off of that number, or they may need more. But then, early on, people can say, oh, wow, that's a lot, or I wonder why that is, and, and, and have the ability to ask questions and send emails and, and be more involved earlier on, understanding that the numbers are not-
They're work in progress.
They're not solid.
Right.
Um, one thing we could think about doing is, is having staff in, in late summer go through what our revenues look like, what our, um, what our free cash looks like, and give you a, a kind of a big picture assessment of how much we think the town could afford in the following year. Um, some communities, the selectmen actually kind of set a, um, parameters around what they'd like to see the whole budget come in at, and it kind of sets the stage for everybody, hey, we can afford up to this before we have to think about an override, or we really want to be here, or whatever that is. And then, that kicks off the process for which people start to think about their budgets and submit them, and you have hearings, and people can come to them. And you can have a whole process set up that way, um, or something like it, just-
Yeah.
-to kind of help people get ready and know what to expect, what we can't afford, you know, if that's the concern, or gee, we could afford to go a little more, we really want to focus on X this year. This is our priority.
Right.
Budget priorities, I think, because you are the ones that have to propose a balanced budget to town meeting. So you're in the best position to kind of set the stage for everybody. You know, maybe you want to have a conversation with the school committee upfront and kind of understand where they're coming from before you make that, if you want to make a decision. And then you go forward from that, work from there.
As far as setting a bar from the get-go, as opposed to-
You could.
-accepting everything and everything, and then having to-
I wasn't here for last year's budget, so maybe I'm talking out of my ear. You already do this, but, just an idea.
I think it's good. It's a great idea. Oh?
I don't know how you-
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
So I just wanted to amplify what CC was saying and suggest that, in addition to making a very preliminary budget available, it would be good to, uh, do the same thing with other warrant articles in, in their infancy, when they're first being proposed, um, before they're, you know, refined and looked at by, um, town council, um, to get an idea of what, what kind of things people are thinking of, putting, um, proposing for the warrant, so that townspeople have an opportunity to comment on them before the language is fixed in the warrant.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you. Makes sense. I think that there's a little bit more of an intricacy as it pertains to ten meeting articles in terms of specific language that's required, and sometimes they're not actually finalized until they make it to the paper, so they wouldn't be available too far ahead of time. But for many of them, I think you're absolutely right.
I mean, I, as with the budget, one would have to understand that this is subject to being removed in its entirety. It's subject to being radically changed, uh, but just to give people an idea of what, what's being thought of.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the one last note I'll throw on, the visual budget idea, is I did have the opportunity to see it in action. I spoke with the finance director from the town of Arlington.
Oh, yes. I know.
Apparently, he's quite well-known.
Oh, yes.
He, he gave a very thorough outline of what they utilize. And it's very cool, because you can go in and you can say what your tax bill was last year, and it will pop up a visual that says, how much of the exact money that you paid went to these individual areas, and what part of their budget it went to, if you drill down into each of the different departments. So I think it gives a lot of clarity to people as to, hey, how much of my money is going where, when we look at these budgets and what they're actually paying on a year-to-year basis. Um, I don't have a great idea of the cost yet, but I would like to explore it to see if it's something that makes sense. And you're just finally year-to-year over there, because you probably know that oh so well.
Is that the, is that the gold-plated website?
Have to trip the town manager from Arlington next time I see him. Sorry, Adam.
So we'll bring all that together into one cohesive document. We'll bring it to our next meeting for review, and at that point, we'll be happy to share with the rest of the community as to how we're gonna be looking in terms of our focus going into the next year. And like CC and Chris had both mentioned, that'll be a working document that we'll be updating and refreshing as we go through the course of the year, as new things pop up. All right. Next item on our agenda tonight is to discuss the roles and responsibilities of the board of selectmen and the town administrator. Blythe?
So, the role of the town administrator isn't defined in the bylaws. Um, there is this job description that was updated, I guess, before the process started to fill the position, uh, late last year. And so, given the conversation we had earlier about, well, who's signing what contracts and so on, I just thought we should start the discussion, or at least the awareness of where, you know, what decisions, um, I would make, and what decisions and, and actions the board wants to make sure it always takes, so that we can make sure that we're all understanding how things happen and who's responsible for what. I mean, the, the job description is fairly clear in most areas, but in some, like contracts, it's not. The bylaws of the town do say that the finance director has to be involved, because they have to, all contracts have to come to him to make sure that they are following state procurement laws, and we have the money for them. Um, but for right now, there are some departments who are signing contracts for things, once they've gone that step, and they don't make it even to me. And so it seemed like a good, one particular item to at least start to bring to your attention and just start to think about, do we want to be any more specific, or are there things that you're especially concerned about, that we want to make sure we're taking care of in a different way? Um, that's where I wanted to start.
Chris, any thoughts?
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions on it, uh, like, under-job environment. I didn't understand the comment, errors can result in delay or loss of service, legal repercussions, and monetary loss. It seemed like it was sort of thrown out there.
Um, not thrown out there, and I'm sure that Scott can answer. Fill in if I miss any, anything that he would have said. Um, when job descriptions like this were developed, I think in the early two thousands, there was a patent classification plan done. And usually, that process involves developing a job description and then using a various criteria, probably thirteen or fourteen different criteria, to determine what, what grades the job should be. What is the simplest job in the organization? Maybe the van driver at the COA, and what's the most complex job in an organization? Um, and you rate various things, like the, whether or not if, if, if finance director made an error that caused a significant financial hardship for the town. That is very complex, maybe hard to, for others to distinguish. And so, it's important for that job to be ver, that person, that job to be very good at it, that gets a higher rating. So, role, um, language like this goes into job descriptions, so you can make those differentiation- So role, language like this goes into job descriptions so you can make those differentiations. And so the person who's at the top of the organization, these are the things that you measure against. How'd I do?
Excellent. It really has to do with the level of risk that this person can put the town in, what, what level of things they can sign. So if Blythe makes a major blunder in signing a contract, it can cost this town a lot of money. And so that is a major piece in how you rate a job, as Blythe had said.
It looks at, most of these systems look at the amount of initial the job is required by the job, the complexity, the breadth of supervision and number of people. The responsibility to provide vision and strategic thinking that the board has to rely on. The ability to negotiate issues or deal with others, you know, agencies and levels of government, you know, at the lowest level. You know, a position maybe at, I don't want to call it a position, but I'll pick on van driver again. You know, it's a pretty well-defined, fairly straightforward, simple repetitive job. But it takes incredible customer service skills and attention to detail to get people where they need to go and on time and so on. But they're not balancing the budget of the town, so that's how they change.
So it's more of a criteria. Is that what that lines, that sentence means? It just was, it stands alone out there, so it was odd. Why is it sitting alone out there? It really, it didn't, it wasn't sort of set as a.
If you had the book of how to rate the job and you read the various classifications, you'd find that in there. And you'd say, okay, this job is, is, gets more points and is higher on the scale than this other job in the library or something.
Other question I had was item 16. It says you oversee maintenance of all town buildings with the exception of school and library, which I thought was odd.
So schools are always under the jurisdiction of the school committee and ergo the superintendent in every community. In Norfolk, the library, the budget for maintenance is in the town, but the actual responsibility for the building is the library trustees. And that's also fairly typical.
I don't understand it because if you maintain the town hall, you maintain the police station, you maintain the fire station. Why wouldn't you maintain the library and the school buildings? To me, it's just if you, if you're, if you're responsible for the overseeing of maintenance, why do we accept the school and the library building from that? It makes no sense to me. You have a budget at the town hall, you have a budget at the fire station, you have a budget at the police station. So why don't we include all buildings? Why do we segregate those two only?
Well, I'd say chapter 70 of the Mass General laws gives certain jurisdiction to schools for their buildings. So while we have a joint person and we have in our budget some of their costs, they are responsible for their buildings. And to me, that's just a, that is how it is. Libraries, I think there has, there is some more flexibility depending on the community. But in this community, and I understand from speaking to Matt, you know, he goes and speaks with the trustees about, and the director about things they, they want to do, but the budget comes through him. But at the end of the day, they control the programs that happen there and how they use that building. And it's generally, I guess I would say it's fairly well-understood in the municipal world that that's how these things go. That's not a very good answer perhaps, but.
It's a terrible answer.
Sorry.
A terrible answer. So I will charge you with looking into it even further because to me that makes no sense. I, do we, I mean, if we're responsible for the schools building, putting a new roof on their building, we're not going to be responsible for their maintenance overall? Similar to, similar to our new $14 million public safety building? Similar to our new fire sta, I don't, it makes no sense to me. It's almost like we've, they've been segregated for some particular.
Because, because the state, state law is very clear about the roles and responsibilities of schools and school committees versus selectmen and the town side. And I, I mean, I, I maybe can have the town council who's sitting in the audience help me with this one, but. Well, we, we go much further than most communities in sharing a person and sharing the, the conversation about it. But the actual control of the building, security of the building is absolutely theirs. I wouldn't question.
I don't know how a school would be more secure than a public safety building.
Well, you've got, you've got people you don't want coming into a school in the school day and issues you see happening in other places of the country where things happen in schools. So they are much more vigilant about who can come into a building, when they can come into a building, the control of the building.
Chris, is your concern from an efficiency standpoint, if we're.
No, it just doesn't, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me. It's just we're overseeing maintenance of all town buildings with the exception of school and library. To me, it just doesn't make sense.
And.
I mean, it's, it's, it's almost like saying the board of selectmen is in charge of everything, but.
Yeah.
But library and.
But we're responsible for libraries and schools as well.
No, we're, we're, we're providing the custodians. We are cleaning the school.
No, we aren't, but we're, we oversee the schools. Their budget, we oversee. We.
No, you don't.
We approve it.
Once you approve it, it's absolutely theirs to do it as they like.
We do approve it.
You approve it at town meeting.
Yes.
Once you give it to them, they can make whatever changes they want and whatever line items and spend it however they choose.
Okay.
And so it might be.
That's unlike any other department in town.
Yes, it is. Very much so.
Except for library.
Library is a little more like town. And in Norfolk, we have in the facilities budget, the dollars to do the maintenance and our staff does it. DPW is out there spreading mulch for the last two days. I mean, we do that for them, but the control of their building is theirs. So it's a, it's a cooperative relationship.
David, anything you'd like to add?
Town council, have I missed anything?
I know, Chris, it's counterintuitive to understand that we're in a community that has town-owned buildings, it has school buildings, it has other emergency fire and police. But it's a, it's a statutory creation. And, and that's not to say that in some communities, there is that combined facilities maintenance or facilities management between towns and schools. But that's by legislative action. Because I think that the normal, the norm is, as Blythe has explained, a bright line, very bright line between town and schools. And we see it, you know, with the, the budget. Your opportunities to, to give them a number and that's as far as you can go. You can't meddle in any other way. So it, it, it is also true with regard to building maintenance that the norm is, or the standard is for the school committee to control those buildings unless there's some sort of either charter change or legislative change that would say otherwise.
Interesting.
I actually would applaud Norfolk for what it's done to create the shared position and the shared relationship and working together to maintain the buildings. I think not, many communities have not taken the steps that you've taken over the years.
So Chris, did you still want to look deeper into any opportunities or potential there is to consolidate further? More particularly looking at the library, it sounds like from what David outlined.
Not at this time.
Okay.
We can always explore it later. Do a little more research on it.
Very good. Cece, did you have any comments or questions on the outline as it stands?
No.
From my perspective, I think this just pulls together a lot of bits and pieces of things that we've been doing over the course of the last four or five months. Starting with the job description or the outline that we gave the consultant for the search for the town administrator.
Right.
And then leading into some of the decisions and directions we've taken over the course of the last three or four months in terms of who does what and where things tend to live.
And I think, what I think you can, you can decide upon as, as we, as you spend more time together as a board and you see things come up on agendas. You can decide at some point that there's something that you don't think you need to do at every meeting and you want to delegate, you have that opportunity to do it. And we can discuss what those are when you're, as the situation arises.
Right.
Just so your, your meetings are efficient, you know, transparency, of course, but you make it a point where it's like, I'd rather you did that for us.
What was the example that you used? The printer color replacement contract?
Yes.
So it doesn't look like we have any action here either, so unless anybody has anything else, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is going to be the approval of some warrants.
Which I forgot to script, script a motion for, so.
That's okay. And I know this one all too well.
I'm sure you do.
So since I signed all of them, I would like to move that we accept the warrants for the date 4/23/2019 in the amount of $969,119.96. The one dated for 4/30/19 in the amount of $62,992.11. Another dated for 4/30/19 in the amount of $2,336.42. Another for the date of 4/30/19 in the amount of $424,418.70. One for the date of 5/7/19 in the amount of $168,229.12. One for the date of 5/14/19 in the amount of $100,673.72. And one more for the date of 5/14/19 in the amount of $268,177.66. Say it again if you said that.
Make him read it again.
I have a second.
Second. I actually said second.
Oh, thank you. Further discussion? There are none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add one thing.
Sure.
So these come in either every week or every other week. They're in our office and they do need to be signed. And so the KKs you see after each ones are the fact that Kevin did. We can have one member sign them all the time. We can have one of you, and it could be rotating or whoever gets there first. But that's how they get to this point with initials on them is someone comes in. You can look through all the bills and read many pages or you can just sign them. They've been through a process in finance before they get to that point. But it is a regular order of business that we need to have taken care of, so I'm not sure how you'd like to handle it, but I'm just making you aware of it.
I, it's my personal belief that the flexibility of having it be open to whomever is available to be able to make it in is a benefit to the board as a whole. So my preference would be to leave it open unless anybody has a strong feeling in another direction.
No, I think that makes sense.
Yes, sir.
I just want to point out that in the interest of transparency, these are pretty mysterious to me. I hear dollar amounts and dates and have no information about who the dollars are going to or what they're for. And I wonder if, if the board does want to increase transparency, it would be possible to add to the agenda a little more information about these. Saying, you know, what, what the funds are for and who the recipient is.
You can go right ahead.
So they're basically the payroll warrants to all employees, school and town, as well as all the accounts payable by both the school and town for things like buying oil or school books or services of the consultant who's going to do the stormwater study. Any expenses of the town either on a payable warrant or on a payroll. So employees of town get paid every two weeks. So there's a payroll warrant every two weeks, one for the school and one for the town and so on.
You know, so I certainly don't have comments about the validity of them. I'm sure they're all valid and fine. I'm just saying that if the board were willing to say that a particular one was for payroll, not mentioning the employees by name, but just, you know, school payroll or something or some other, provide more clue about what, what it is. I mean, I appreciate your explanation and if that explanation were on the agenda, that would be good, in my opinion.
Earlier, we had suggested that scanning the, the whole packet to the website was a plan. And so then you would have your agenda that says we're, we're going to approve, hopefully if everybody votes in favor. I'm not going to make an assumption of what people are going to vote for in the future, but you know, on the agenda is the following warrants have been signed. 4/23, yada, yada, yada includes identifying numbers. And then if all of this information is scanned, then you at your leisure over a cup of coffee can scroll through and say, oh, it says payroll $62,992.11, which match, right, then, then you'll have the whole.
That would be great. I haven't seen the packets that you get, so I don't know what's in them, but if in fact that information is in the packet.
I don't see anything identifying that would be, these are.
Some of these are just a cover memo. We can work with finance and see if there's a little more detail we can give. Because otherwise they, they come in a large, you know, yeah. Is that a warrant right there?
Yep.
Yep, that's a warrant right there.
I was just making a suggestion for transparency because I believe that all the members of the board are in favor of increased transparency.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I don't believe in the past that we've put in copies of the warrant cover pages in the packet. Am I correct in that?
I don't think so, but we can try to do that. I mean, it's fine.
Okay. Because I think then you'd be able to tie out to a number and be able to make the assumption of which goes where.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Next item that we have, please consider the approval of minutes. We have no minutes. This is the quickest item ever. Item number 15. It looks like we will be concluding our open session and moving into executive session. Do we have anything else for open session before we move into executive session? Mr. Weider?
No, I'm all set.
Cece? Blythe?
I took a few more pains to script these motions and separate executive sessions because they're, while they're the same reason to go into executive session, they're two different topics. And so when we want to vote to release minutes in the future, we could choose to release one and not the other rather than having them combined. And having, having learned some lessons from other communities about how to make sure these are scripted correctly. They're, they're kind of long, but I think they're appropriate. The only thing I would say is I forgot to include Nancy on the list of employees who would be invited into the meeting. So whoever reads it, if you could add her name, that would be great.
Very good. Two questions. One, will we have to exit one executive session and then enter into another executive session?
Correct. In order to keep the one executive session separate from the other one, we really need to leave one. And then for the purpose of going into a second one, then we finish the second one for the purpose of either A, the board's ready to vote on the contract and you're going to do that. Or B, you're just going to go out of executive session to go into general session to adjourn.
So there is the potential that we will be entering back into open session?
There is that potential, but I can't know that yet.
Very good. Okay.
May I make one other comment before you enter executive session?
Sure.
And that's that my understanding is the practice of the Board of Library Trustees is on their agenda as generally the first item is public comment. And that, I know you did talk about, you talked about setting up procedure. They, you know, don't really have much procedure. They just have an agenda item of public comment. I think in view of this board wanting to be sure that not too much time was taken with that. If you do it, you might want to limit the amount of time that each commenter has. But my, my suggestion was just put that as an agenda item at the beginning of each agenda.
I'll chime in there because I had wanted to note when you'd read that a friend of mine is a selectman in Stoughton and a partner of mine. And he said the same thing for Stoughton. They allow, they have it as the first agenda item or the second one after calling a meeting to order a particular time-limited public comment section so that people, even if all they want to do is come in and say, I don't like what you're doing, and then turn around and leave it. Right, it's, it's at the beginning so people know.
Yeah, I also think it would be important to have a policy on, on all of that.
Right.
It's become more important for communities since the NADIC decision and some of the issues that some of those communities have had. I know of one very handy, so I'm going to get it out to you. We can think about amending something like that for us and then start the process.
Something that was important to me as well, David, when talking about this was I wanted to make sure that we gave people a path to be able to have a two-way dialogue as opposed to just being able to offer a public comment. So whereas, you know, it's easy to say you can come in and speak for three minutes at the beginning of a meeting. In most cases, I imagine the board would have to identify that we'll have to get back to you when we do research on the thing you're bringing to us. I wanted to make sure we also highlighted the path of where that dialogue would be able to happen, whereas if somebody would submit it to the board ahead of time, have it be an agenda item, have preparation go in bounds and then be able to recognize them and have that kind of dialogue in addition to having a path to just having a comment period.
I, I think that's excellent. I applaud you for, for putting that forward. I would appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you. All right. With that, I would move that we enter into executive session under Mass General Law, section, chapter 30A, subsection 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body with regard to the fire union contract. I believe we need a roll call vote. with regard to the fire union contract, I believe we need a roll call vote.
First, you should finish the, what's scripted, and then it might make sense to have someone else read the motion, so that you can read the section as chair.
Oh, look at that, you put names next to everybody's line in everything.
I'd like to take, I'd like the role of muzant in this particular, so shall I?
Go right ahead.
All right, so I am going to move that the board enter into executive session under Mass General laws, chapter thirty A, sections twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body with regard to the fire union contract, and invite David DeLuca, Scott Bragdon, and Blythe Robinson to participate.
And Nancy Langloy.
And Nancy Langloy.
The chairs, I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body.
So then you
Oh, now we poll the board individually for roll call vote. We're going to get there, ladies and gentlemen, I do promise. Give us a couple of meetings.
Aye.
Aye.
Devin Calcut, aye. I believe that is it, thank you very much.